All right, welcome all of you in attendance to our May 15 continued ... tonight is I guess lunchtime, so you say tonight sitting here, but it's our lunchtime rollout of our county manager's proposed budget for our next fiscal year. I would like to remind all of you that this is the first time that the commissioners have seen this budget, so it's their first time to start to wrap our head around it and see our county manager's presentation. We'll be discussing it over the next month, six weeks, and we're going to go over some dates a little bit later in the meeting about when we were required to have it approved, and it has to be a balanced budget, some words, our revenues after meeting our expenditures. But I'm not going to take up a whole lot of time because that will be taken away from my county manager's time during the Jordan speaking today. So, Mr. Rollins, if you'd like to roll out your budget, we'll be happy to hear it. We'll try not to throw anything at you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Board. It is an honor, as it is every year, to present the recommended budget for the coming fiscal year. I will say, as I do every year, that there is no way this could have been accomplished without the hard work and dedication of the Macon County employees. As we are every year, we're faced with challenges, but we're also faced with opportunities, and those challenges can also be viewed as opportunities in themselves being opportunities to excel. And through addressing these challenges in the coming budget, we will be able to continue providing our citizens with what I feel is the highest quality in public service. But again, it could not have been done without these employees, without these department heads throughout budget negotiations, willing to make sacrifices where need be, and asking themselves what's important now as we move into the coming fiscal year. So again, as I say every year, I can't thank each of them enough, and it's an honor to work with them each and every day. Moving right along, we will, I've got a, this presentation's got a very good ending, a very good beginning, and just a little bit in the middle. It's like a good sermon, so just keep that in mind as we go through. The recommended budget for fiscal year 18, 19, is $49.8 million. That's representative of about a half a percent increase over the current year original budget. Now, at this level of expenditures, as I said earlier, we will be able to continue providing the citizens of Macon County with the best in public service while simultaneously addressing some of those challenges that I spoke of you earlier, and we will speak in greater depth about as we move through this presentation. While providing those services, we will continue to do it at a very good price, at .34.9 cents per $100 of assessed value, Macon County's tax rate there, when you see the average for our region at .45 on the 100, and the average of the state at .67 on the 100. We are far below both the region and the state of North Carolina in the price that we're currently charging for providing these services. And as recommended by the Board of Commissioners for the fiscal year 18, 19 budget, no ad v. warrant tax increase has been included in this recommended budget. We'll retain our solid financial position moving into fiscal year 18, 19. Our fund balance there, you can see, will slightly increase by about $254,000. That is again representative of revenues receiving expenditures in the fiscal year. So at $22.4 million, we will remain healthy. It will be an asset both when we move on the capital improvement plan, whether it is us deciding to pay for one-time capital expenditures using this money, or whether it is us deciding to go to market for a loan. The healthy fund balance has helped us on many projects, the most recent being the Parker Meadows project, the landfill project, and receiving extremely favorable interest rates on that money. Aside from the fund balance, when you look at debt, since 2011, we have essentially cut our debt load in half. Macon County, along with that fund balance, which is a very positive financial indicator, looks very good. Macon County has been able to pay about 88% of all of our debt we issue off in 10 years or less. That is another financial indicator that is looked very favorably upon by our financial consultants and by the industry as well. If you look, beginning in 2019 here through 2033, the trend, the debt will continue to go down in the event we do not add new debt on. This year, the debt is going to increase, the principal and interest payment on debt load will increase by about $165,000, and that is representative of the South Macon School project coming online, the sixth classroom addition, cafeteria expansion to the South Macon School project. And again, we're right now currently getting the bids back and going to be going to the local government commission. In next fiscal year, the $165,000 increase is one half-year payment. So it's $332,000 altogether, but it's twice a year. So we'll be making that one payment in the coming fiscal year, and that's what that's representative of. That number is based on $3 million. We used for budgetary purposes a 4.5% interest rate at 15 years. So that is the debt increase in fiscal year 18, 19. Now that we've looked at the budget, let's look at what's going into this budget on the revenue side. In fiscal year 18 and 19, we had an increase in our ad v. warrant tax collection rate. There you can see that increase is about $318,699. What that is attributable to is a $74 million increase in value combined with a .23% increase in our ad v. warrant tax collection rate to about 98.1%. And those folks do a fine job, and that is representative of that. That is an excellent tax collection rate. Sales tax, about, this makes up about 16% of the revenue in our budget. When we're budgeting, we have seven months of actuals. We take those seven months of actuals and we project out what we're going to finish this current year. So in doing that, we projected to finish this current year 4.9% above the fiscal year 17 actuals. So that number is $7.84 million. When moving into the next fiscal year, we applied a 3% growth onto that $7.8 million, which brings us to that $714,000 increase in sales tax revenue to right around $8.07 million. So that is what will be budgeted for sales tax collections in the coming fiscal year, again, an increase of $714,000. When you look at the intergovernmental revenues, this decrease right here, it is substantial, $1.1 million. What that is due to is the elimination of a child subsidy pass-through grant from DSS. The intergovernmental revenue, as you will see as you look through your budget, that is primarily all for health department, DSS, and that grant is going away in the next fiscal year, so it will not be there. The fund balance appropriation of $300,000, as we discussed in our February work session, that $300,000 is recommended to be used to conduct the space needs analysis, which as we discussed, I think it was a priority for everyone, and it will work in conjunction with our capital improvement plan, just to give us a way to better prioritize those capital needs moving forward. So that's $250,000 increase in revenue. So now let's look at where that revenue's going. When we look at expenditures in the budget, what I'm going to do is I'm going to highlight the changes within each function of this pie, each function of our general fund budget. Going to highlight where that changed. And remember, we only had $250,000 of additional revenue going in, so we'll focus on these changes and take a look function by function. When you look here, moving into fiscal year 18, 19, we'll continue to place our highest priority on public safety and education. Although the human services down here is $11.8 million, and then says it's 24%, we have to remember there that only $4.5 million of that is county money. The rest is money coming in from state and federal agencies. So at 28% and 18% respectively, we will continue to place that high priority in those areas. Health insurance was probably, had the largest impact on the county's operating budget in fiscal year 18, 19. Right here, you see the rate changes we got will equal a $500,000 annual increase in annual contributions to the health insurance fund. The remaining $258,000, it was overall a 24% or about $762,000 increase. We had no choice but to absorb that half a million, and then for that remaining $258,000, continue to pass to the employee through a reduction in county subsidy for dependent coverage. Now, what we're doing now, the employee only, will continue. The county pays a set amount, I think it's $693 this year for employee-only coverage. What the family subsidy is, is for years, the county pays, if you have family or dependent coverage, the county pays $693 for you as an employee, then an amount on top of that for your dependent coverage. So where this cost is being passed is the county is reducing the percentage that they are paying for that dependent coverage. And that is what you're seeing, you know, you saw it happen in the private sector 15 years ago. And that's what you're seeing as these rising health insurance costs continue. That is the only place that there is to turn, is there. We will continue working. The Health Insurance Committee has worked on this diligently, and we will continue working on health insurance. But we are still trying to find what is the new normal in the term of health insurance, like I think everyone is. I think public and private sector organizations all across the country are struggling with this and still trying to figure this out, as is Macon County. But we will continue working and doing all we can to try to get this under control. We have had two of the worst claims years in our history, and it just happens to be right after we have made these changes. So that has been an ever-changing thing, and it has had a tremendous impact on the county. When you look, this excerpt, and I apologize that it is so small, it will be, it's included in your budget message, and it's an excerpt directly taken from that. But when you look at what we did, we shopped this like we do every year. We got seven proposals back. When you look at the names, you're familiar with each of them, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Crescent, Health Scope, United Healthcare, Cigna, Aetna, MedCost. And at 24.27%, our incumbent provider, Blue Cross Blue Shield, the next closest one to them was a 36.9% increase in health insurance operational cost. So, you know, we did all we could on our end shopping this, and, you know, we continue to, the health, the employee health clinic, we continue to make that accessible to employees ... everything we can to get these costs down. When you look since fiscal year 15, 16, when we talk about operating increases, like we're having this year as a result of changes to health insurance, Macon County's contributed approximately 1.2 million. We're contributing 1.2 million more annually to health insurance operations than we were three years ago. When you look at the one-time appropriations that we've made over that same three-year time period to the health insurance reserve fund, that's $1.8 million. Right there's $3.1 million that we are spending on insurance that we weren't spending three years ago, whether it be through one-time appropriations or operating increases to the health insurance fund. So as a county, you know, we have, this has been something that we have had to adapt to, like everyone has had to adapt to, and it is costing more money here like it is everywhere. Just wanted to show that to you. Here, in the boxes below, basically what we have is that $256,000 that we talked about, reduction in the subsidy level for dependent coverage. On those employees on the enhanced plan with dependent coverage, you're looking at increases from 33% to 44% across dependent categories. When you look at the base coverage, you're looking at 42% to 54% increase for dependent coverage there. But when you compare these rates that we're at now, even with these changes, Macon County still retains among the highest quality and most affordable health insurance plans you can have out there. And that's something that has not came by accident. It has came because of a lot of hard work on these folks that have served on this insurance committee, and as we have tried to address and stay in front of these health insurance The other impact that $500,000 had is, you know, this year, we will not be recommending a cost of living increase. But as you look back and you look at that same three-year time period we looked at on insurance, we as a county have been able, through implementation of the pay plan and trying to keep that pay plan progressing, we have been able in those same three-year time periods to put ourselves in a position with the investment we have made in our employees to be able to be better prepared to go into 1920. So while we don't have a cost of living increase this year, what we can look at is the things that we have been able to do in the previous three years still put us on level playing field. When you look at regional competitiveness of salaries and when you look at things like what the Social Security Administration recommended over the past three years for cost of living adjustments, and compare that to what we've been able to do. So now let's get into the functions. Again, we'll highlight each function, kind of the change there and where that change comes from.
Derek, before you move forward, can you tell how many employees we got?
360.
Say that. $784,000.
But that is not covered lives.
Right. That's just employee on...
That's just employee.
You have to have a number of covered lives.
I see what you're saying, right. But if you get it on that, you're still looking at roughly a $2,000 increase per employee. That's how much your health insurance is going up this year or last year.
No employee only we're absorbing at all.
Yeah.
It's just the people that have dependents.
That's what I'm saying. It's a $784,000 increase total.
Right.
We have 360 employees, so if you look at it on a per-employee basis, that's about a $2,000 increase per employee.
Yeah, yeah, that we're paying, that everybody's paying off together.
Everybody, that's correct.
Yeah.
I understand, so it's county some others.
Certainly, yes.
But I'm looking at the grand total, seeing how much more health insurance is costing, by looking at where the money's coming from.
Right, right. Yes, absolutely. And, you know, it's just, and to think that the net, you know, that 24% increase, the next closest you have's 36. I mean, and those were, you know, those are big-name providers that are competitive in the market, and so, you know, it is a struggle. It is. The public safety at $13.8 million in fiscal year 18, 19, this is about a $373,000 increase over fiscal year 17, 18. When you look at here, the operating cost increases are highlighted in blue, the capital cost increases are highlighted in red. When you look at our operating cost increases, $203,120 of that is associated with overhead cost in detention center. When you look, the population in the detention center since fiscal year 14 has increased by 88%. Where we were housing 59 in fiscal year 14 on average a day, now we're housing 100, you know, and that is having to take and transport those inmates out of county, and things like medical cost with, like we've just talked about on the county level, we're seeing it in the detention center as well. That has led to increased operating cost, and that has led to these increases here. $185,000 was the public safety function, again, that is sheriff, detention, EMS, emergency management, building inspections. That was the portion in increase in county contribution for insurance, $185,388. You take that combined with the fire task force, as you'll recall, last year was the first year that we started the fire task force. However, those members did not come on until mid-year in the budget, there were four of them. So what that $94,000 increase is, is representative of that remaining six-month salary. So this year, whereas they're going to be working a full year, so that $94,000 is representative of a full year of the fire task force. We've had great success with it this year. I was talking to Warren the other day. We just had six departments undergo inspection, and I know they were given full credit for an additional member because of the fire task force and the work that they're doing and assisting those departments with. And I think that when the results of that rating inspection come back at everyone, all Macon County residents, you know, that are under these fire departments are going to be very pleased with those results. The capital increase in $90,000 is an ambulance, ambulance remount. We did not do one last year in the budget, so putting that in there this year represents that increase of $90,000. Last but not least, courthouse security, $55,800 has been added in that line item of the sheriff. And as you know, we have had a courthouse security meeting that's met for quite some time now, led by the sheriff and the resident superior court judge. We are working as a committee to finalize that report, which I think contains some very good recommendations for courthouse security, and that will be presented in the coming fiscal year. So when you look at the operating cost increases and the capital cost increases that we've just discussed there, while it's a $373,500 increase, we've just went over $628,000 worth of really unavoidable cost that we have incurred in that department. Now granted, some things are rolling off, but that just goes to show you what has came on this year within that function. I don't know, it's, computer's frozen, and I was just getting into information technology.
That was all, sir.
I was about to say he planned it. They did your budget too, Derek.
This laptop comes out of my budget.
While we're, Mr. Chairman, if you want to, while we're in this break and rebooting this, if you want to discuss possible work session dates or something of that, we can go ahead and get that taken care of while we're dealing with this.
Absolutely. Well, I know we're obviously going to have a work session just probably meeting the Board of Education. Are there any others that you have that we're going to need?
Um...
I'm not going to know specifically until I have a chance to get a bit of budget.
None that, but we do, we generally have one with us in the Board of Education annually.
What we'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, if it's not, without objection, is have a liaison committee meeting, we think that might be productive and help us when we get together with both. You agree on this, Chairman?
That'd be fine with us, Mr. Phil.
So I don't know how that plays into that, if everybody's available for that. Me and Mr. Shields have had that discussion, and we just think it might be productive, might save some time when both of us do get together.
We still think we're going to need as a whole, I think it would be about...
I think it, I think we'll still need to meet as a whole, but I think, I think the liaison committee would be productive and super creative.
So if we set a date today, then...
We'll work, we'll work backwards, whatever.
We don't have any fire districts asking for tax increases, so there's not any free time you have to get with those things.
Dr. Ball, as far as the liaison committee, we give time to give everybody. With the 23rd on Wednesday, would that work for the 24th?
We both got graduation, right?
It's the 3rd, yes.
The 3rd, or something on the 24th?
We have one, we have one of our schools on the 24th.
Highland.
Yeah, I think it's...
Nana Hala.
Nana Hala.
Highland's Middle School and Nana Hala.
Yeah, we have all of them starting on the 24th, and I think we have one about every night for the next five nights.
So the 25th, or then you got Memorial Day on the 28th.
We, are you going to meet...
We're in Raleigh on the 29th, 30th.
23rd?
We want to meet after 5:00, Mr. Bill.
I mentioned the 23rd, that was on Wednesday.
The 23rd?
What time are you...
It's up to you, whatever works.
We can meet during the day on the 24th.
Say 2:00 or...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that good for everybody, you think? Are you going tight? Is it good, Mr. Shields?
I believe the 23rd, what time?
2:00.
That's totally planned on that, Dan, because some changes.
We'll meet at your place.
We'll look at 24th and 23rd at 2:00.
That'll work for you.
Yes, sir.
Would that work for you?
Something we want to meet is the full board on maybe Tuesday the 5th. I think that was just the liaison meeting, correct?
That's about there. The 23rd is the end.
We want to meet the full boards on Tuesday the 5th.
Dr. Ball, check his schedule. He's a busier man than I am.
That should be fine.
May 8th, 4:00. What would be best, what would be best for your board, do you think?
5:00.
For the full board, 5:00 would be better.
Okay. Does that work with all of you gentlemen?
June, we're talking about 6:30.
Both boards?
What was that called? Was it 5:00 after you?
Both boards? What was that called? Was it 5:00 after you? Did you skip that?
No, I can, I'm good till 5:00.
5:00, I think we get 5:00, it's good.
You can just tell them if you missed that.
So, what about you? Dr. Ball, she for 5:00 on Tuesday, June 5th? Full board we want to meet. Presume meet here, or Derek?
Yes, that's, that'd be fine.
Need to recess, let's make this kill that day.
Okay.
Unless you're going to meet for another person.
We're going to meet in this room?
Yeah, we can, we can. We'll sit here, now it's.
Did that do the same thing right there?
Yeah. I saw it collapse down to the bottom. Okay. All right, let's, if everybody's good with it, we'll go through while this, while she's got her last breath in her here. So, we went over public safety, education. We have increased the schools' operating funds by $200,000 in the coming fiscal year to help them with increased operating expenses. The supplement has been funded in full, capital outlay remained at $600,000 prior year level. SEC operating in capital for Southwestern Community College, I meant $281,843, that's representative of the prior fiscal year amount. We will, however, as we have approved, be moving forward with SEC and the fire safety training facility, and that will be coming down the pipe in this fiscal year. And with that, if you'll recall when we signed that, we will be anticipating additional operating expenses coming as a result of that new facility in the 1920 budget year.
Now, the supplement, what information we received yesterday, supplement, supplement numbers that go up, the information we received yesterday, it's a rate that goes through the teacher. So, we're talking pretty, did you bring in, Mr. Shields?
Yeah. This is, these are the numbers that, that we were given at, at budget time, you know, when we put it together, so if, if it, yes, any, any fluctuation, we'll have to, we'll have to see what, what happens there and, and look back at it.
Did you see that yesterday, Mr. Shields?
I've seen what the governor's proposed. Angie built in planning allotment salary increase when she budgeted that.
This number? So, it's already some.
She, she did budget an increase, salary increase.
So, when you look at the education function, it's 182,723 increase to the education function over fiscal year 1718. Moving right along to the general government, what we have here primarily, and you'll see that red in capital cost for IT, that is for a server replacement. We're completely replacing all of our switches and servers. We are also going to be bringing our server licensing up to date, as well as we're going to replace our current network backup solution. So, all that together, as referenced in the CIP, the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 1819, again, all that's going to be going on and directly relates to our technology backbone here in the county. That will result in a $464,000 increase to the general government function. LED light replacement, we're, that project is also referenced in the capital improvement plan and will take that on in fiscal year 1819. That $35,000, again, that is a $185,000 project. The reason it's $35,000 is because last year, we had $150,000 in the building maintenance, in the building and grounds line item for the detention center roof replacement. So, that, while it's a $185,000 project, again, I was wanting to talk about the increases in each function and compare them back to the overall increases. So, that goes back to the LED light replacement project, $21,600 is budgeted, electricity rate increases for the coming fiscal year. We have added an additional $50,000 in the governing board's consultative services line item for broadband. Again, as the broadband committee continues to work toward searching for solutions for broadband expansion in Macon County, we'll now have $100,000 in this fiscal year, whereas we had 50 last year, to begin pursuing that and making that happen. Finance has a $23,000 increase simply because of additional compliance regulations that have been imposed by the state auditor. And also, this year, actuarial, actuarial valuations by the governmental accounting standards board, GASP, they're going to be required for certain retirement benefits, like healthcare, other post-employment benefits, OPEB, which that is called, and also the law enforcement officer's special separation allowance. So, that reflects those costs in compliance regulations with the finance office. Health insurance on the general government function, as you'll see up there, that is an increase in operating cost of $94,000 across that function. So, right there, when we talk about general government, increasing by $677,000, we've just discussed about $689,354 worth of them, just to show you kind of what that change is made up of in fiscal year 1819. Transportation, it'll increase by $76,900, while health insurance makes up $12,500 of that increase in operating cost. It also contains $210,435. Again, this was not in the budget last year. This is three new lift-equipped vehicles, and while only is, all that is required from the county is a 10% match, we still reflect that $210,000 in its entirety in the transit expenditures, but it's also reflected in our revenues as well. So, of that increase, $76,000 you can see right there, with that $210,400 being in there, and $12,000 for insurance, you know, tough decisions were made here in this fiscal year, as with all departments. Economic and fiscal development, $19,500 increase with $16,700 increase in operating cost and capital cost increase of $1,300. That were the changes in that budget for the coming fiscal year that make up that increase or change from fiscal year 1718. In human services, it will decrease by $1.1 million overall. Again, that is, that grant went away, the child daycare subsidy grant that we talked about earlier. But county funding will increase, although it's, the overall health and human services is going down, our county funding is increases, increasing. We had to add a child social services worker in DSS at about $59,000 plus. DSS insurance cost was about $65,000. So, with that, that's your $102,000 increase in county funding to DSS. And while county funding increased to the health department by $4,000, the health department's insurance, what we're contributing to their insurance went up by the remainder of that, close to $100,000. So, again, like transit, like, like we've discussed, the premise of this budget, you know, we had to make some decisions and answer that question as we do every year of what's important now. Recreation and culture, this will be a $318,500 decrease from the prior fiscal year. It does include a $20,000 increase in operating funding to Fontana Regional Library. The increase in county contribution from health insurance to this function makes up about $7,100. But the, with that operating increase, the reason for this reduction is, if you'll recall, we provided $350,000 in last year's budget to the town of Highlands for the purposes of renovating their civic center up there. And this fiscal year, we did not carry that expenditure forward. Also in fiscal year 1819, as we've discussed, we will be getting presented with the courthouse security recommendations in the coming fiscal year. We have a contingency fund in the fiscal year 1819 budget, which is attributable to projected revenues exceeding projected expenditures, that will be an amount of $125,000. And lastly, as we have mentioned, the space needs analysis, $300,000 that we have budgeted to come from fund balance is just another tool that we can use alongside that capital improvement plan to allow us to better prioritize for those needs moving forward. The impact that the capital improvement plan had on this budget, as you remember when we discussed the capital improvement plan, it was set spinning parameters within the budget. Because what that plan does is it allows us to accomplish these projects and gives us a basic path for accomplishing these projects while not compromising our financial position and keeping us in good shape. So, in order to do that, there's certain parameters that's set forth. The first one, on the right-hand column here, and again, you can look at this and it'll be a lot bigger in, in the budget message, I do apologize for how small it is. But just to go over it, CIP debt service, it's set a parameter of $332,750. That is the principal and interest payment for an entire year for Southmacon Elementary School. The annual vehicle Pago, it's set a parameter of $600,000. Now, at the time this CIP was adopted, we did not anticipate moving forward the $200,000 that is needed to finish our emergency communications upgrade, which we're finishing in this fiscal year. So, when that gets finished, this year, we had to spend $350,000 on vehicles rather than the 600 of this CIP parameter, but that was only because of that $200,000 in the emergency services upgrade to our communication. So, that will go back in there next year and get that vehicle allotment back up there. And annual school Pago, $600,000, as recommended in the capital improvement plan, or as put in that capital improvement plan originally, we stayed at that $600,000 appropriation level. When you look on the Pago projects that we're going to be completing, I've hit on them throughout the budget discussion, but I'll just go back and touch on them one more time. The space needs analysis, emergency communications upgrade, we'll be finishing that out. That is going to be an excellent, excellent tool for all emergency services personnel. We've been able, through planning, with the emergency management and their efforts there, they're going to be able to ensure that everybody is connected to the system. Our sheriff, our emergency services, our volunteer fire departments, everybody will have access and be able to get on the state-maintained Viper system. And what that is, is by getting us on this Viper system, that's a $184 million system, that's got 700 and something transmission sites across North Carolina, that is the backbone for emergency communications. So, by getting on this system, this $1 million, we've leveraged to get on a $187 million system, and to boot, the state of North Carolina maintains that system. So, operational costs moving forward should be substantially less as well. So, we're really looking forward to that project and, and the benefits that it's going to bring to everyone in Macon County. So, with that being said, you know, in, in short terms, I was joking around with Lori before this budget presentation, and, you know, our revenues increased by $250,000. And with, you know, when you look at the challenges with the health insurance, right there, with half a million dollars of new costs that, that we had to absorb operationally, the $200,000 with detention center, we had to absorb right off the bat, and that's just due to that increase in out-of-county housing. But we were still able to, to meet some demands, we were still able to increase operational funding in, in areas that need it, and that's something, again, that, that we're very proud of. It is this budget, it allows us to continue doing the great job that we do. And as I said to begin, I will say to end, couldn't have been done without the county employees. And it's a, it's an honor and a privilege to work with them, and I enjoy, enjoy what I do, and I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to, to listen to the presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
That, with summary, you gave there, two minutes ago, about the insurance and law services, $200,000, and the $200,000 of land education, additional.
Yeah, yeah. And so there, you know, the, that 200, while we had $250,000 increase in revenue, we just talked about $900,000 increase in operating cost. And so, that's what I say, we were able to, to do what we had to do to continue providing the best in public service. We were able to, to direct more funds toward these priority areas, and we're still able to, to continue trucking along. So, it, it has been, again, it's been a process that has came with a lot of compromise, but at the end of the day, it's a very good product, and it's a product that couldn't have been put together without, without these department heads and employees that, that have participated in putting it together.
Derek, on the revenue side, on the, on the sales tax, Lori, now that, you base that estimate on?
Yeah, that's based on?
This year.
That's based on the League of Municipals' projections, what there's, basically, what they tell, it's like the NCACC fearless forecast, they come out and give, hey, you know, you'll be, you need to project between, but I think they were saying 5% and 6% on growth through the rest of the fiscal year, and then they were projecting 4% to 5% on top of that for growth. We did 4.5% to end this year and 3% on top of that for next year.
Where are we at on sales tax, what, are we two months behind or three?
There's a three-month lag. We just got, let's see, we just got February's money in like yesterday. But as of time of this presentation, we only have seven months to work with. There's a three-month lag, so February sales, we get the money in May.
Where does public pick this information up?
There's going to be copies available at courthouse, there'll be copy available at public library, Mike, where?
Nahla Library.
Nahla Library.
Highlands Library.
Highlands Library.
The Red Line.
We'll put it online, and.
Carl's got a copy down at his office.
Nobody.
And I think the, similar educated issue today, this process has just started.
Yeah.
And as we work through that, probably around June 5th will be the more meat and potatoes of what's going on that we can share with educated issues. We have our next, 12th, is that the?
That'll be the regular meeting, the budget, the hearing on the budget is the 1919.
Thank you, Derek.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Is that looking to see? So, we got full board on the 5th, we gonna also have that working session with that same time as?
That's correct. Unless we need to have another one.
Just count it as a general work session and see what we can get done.
Mike?
Think we can start at 3?
Yeah, we could start our county stuff early.
I'd be fine with everybody start early.
So, we'll plan on making the Board of Education at 5:00, if that's time to go.
Carl said he had leave at 6:15 or something.
You're going to recess to the Board of Education, do you?
No.
No.
We're going to recess in here.
County business starts at 3.
So, we want to do our at 3:00?
We got us two hours.
And then we need to plan that.
Before we ever can schedule another one.
And then we'll try and run that thing.
Right.
And that thing's at 6:00.
All right, gentlemen, the gentleman will remind all of each of you that all of us have been through budgets before, but I'm just going to help Derek out with ease his questions if you can just write your questions down as you come across them and maybe consolidate them into an email and send them to him or go by and meet with him at his meeting, but try and pull it together as one, and then if you think there's something that the rest of us would be interested in, we can obviously discuss it via email, but I think it'd be beneficial if you could at least copy us in, so we kind of know what's being out there as well. Let's see, I know, just from, I know a lot of you in here appear to support the education system. I'm, I'm very familiar with quantity of emails that I'm sure each of us as commissioners have received this week, and I'm doing my best to, to respond to each of them that are sent to me, and it takes a little time to do so, but I just want to remind each of you that tonight's our, or right now is our first time, just like you have seen our, have seen this for the first time, so we'll be digging into the nuts and bolts of that so that we'll be ready to discuss it a little bit more in detail when we meet and with the Board of Education. it a little bit more in detail when we meet with the board of education on June 5th. I know it sounds like, and I haven't, I mean, I know from your emails that it sounds like there's a substantially higher request for funding than what was provided in the county manager's budget this year. But again, we are taking that into consideration and we'll be talking our way through it. So, and I look forward to hopefully having all of you attend that are interested on the 5th. And maybe by that time, five of us, and I know I'm going to need it to digest exactly what's going on with this budget. There's a whole lot of departments, a whole lot of numbers, and I kind of want to see where the funds are going, the differences from prior years, making sure that we're not only doing the prudent thing with our joint tax dollars, but also making the, meeting the funding requests that are not necessarily wants but needs to make things happen for the benefit of our county as a whole. So I'm looking forward to those conversations. And again, gentlemen, we're trying to consolidate your emails. And if I send one to Derek for questions I have, I'll just copy you on all of them and I can ask for discussion, but at least I'll get what I'm asking. Derek may want to address all of them whenever we meet on the 5th at that time. Is there anything I'm forgetting? Anything else? Mr. Vice Chairman?
We need a closing.
Yeah. I think we got a couple other, we got a couple other items to learn, yeah. Any other questions about the budget? Yep. Any questions in general, we'll be happy to try and answer them.
Thanks.
All right, thank y'all. Again, we'll have, there'll be a copy of the budget at both libraries, all three libraries, as well as county manager's office.
Switch floor.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all. 1973.
All right, item number four, directed meets and bounds description to temporary construction needs on U.S. 441 South.
Mr. Chairman, this past Tuesday evening, I presented to you a temporary construction needs, temporary drainage needs from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The board approved that document. On Wednesday morning, I got a call from Dan Rushing, the right-of-way agent towards the Department of Transportation, and he indicated that they had discovered a error in the meets and bounds description. And so he has prepared a revised description that is in this document. And I would respectfully request the board to approve that document being executed in place in lieu of the one that was approved this past Tuesday.
What was that error?
There are, in the document, there are two meets and bounds description that attempted to describe in words what is shown on the plaque that is referenced. And the words didn't quite match up with what was on the plaque, so they had to change the words to make it match up with the plaque.
So do we need to approve that one?
No, you need to approve the one that I'm presenting to you today. That's the revised document.
No changes, they just, they just had the wrong word in.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hand that over to Assistant Clerk.
Do you want me to sign?
Yeah, we'll need you to, you and Derek to sign that this afternoon.
Approval of CDBG grant.
That is not exactly a correct description. This is going to be much easier than that, actually. There was a CDBG grant that dealt with housing rehabilitation. A gentleman by the name of Mr. Willard M. Ash participated in that back in May of 1998. He signed a note and deed of trust in connection with that. And as you know, those are loans that are forgiven over time if the borrower meets the criteria. I've had a conversation with Mr. John Fay, and he has indicated to me that this particular deed of trust of Mr. Willard Ash is referenced in book O22, pages 2323 through 2326, so the public records here in Macon County is ready to be counsel. It can't be counsel without the commissioner's approval and saying, I've prepared the requisite satisfaction of security interest and would ask that you approve the same and authorize your chairman and clerk to the board to execute the same.
As leads on to that department, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the GDBG grant repayment as well as...
Motion for a second, all in favor?
Uh, this is one live by us that we could get signed this afternoon. I think we've got a closing that is dependent upon that. And then the last item that I have, last Tuesday night, you likewise approved the general warranty deed from the county to the southwestern community college trustees for the burn building site. And at the time I presented it to you, I indicated to you that there needed to be some additional looking at the description that was contained in that document. I did indeed find where some additional matters needed to be added to that description, and those have been added. So I would ask that you take this revised deed and approve it to be used in place and in lieu of the one presented this past Tuesday.
I'm sorry, I was adding.
What we found is that there were some old soil roads, an old gravel road, and those need to be referenced in the deed. In other words, the deed is subject to those. Additionally, you've got a little corner of the road that goes up to Siler, a road that comes down through the property. It touches the northeast corner and crosses the northeast corner of this ever so slightly, the curbing in the road. And the county needs to reserve that little piece of road there as well as where the greenway touches a corner of this property. It's the technical little matters.
Motion for approval? All in favor? All right, any other business? We're going to have a closed session, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask one. I believe we have a new person here, Brittany. Can you hear this?
Carolyn is replacing me at the Macon County News. She's been to a couple meetings before, but she'll be seeing her instead of me.
I got your email.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I forgot you all were going to be busy for this, so I give you a pass today. I changed my hair, that's why you don't recognize me.
I didn't get your email this weekend.
You didn't? Okay, it's okay, I'll resend it to you.
I appreciate it.
You probably got lost in all those education requests, okay.
I gave you a card with my, the real email.
Okay, thank you.
It's nice to have you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And you're replacing who?
I'm not replacing, she's not replaceable. I'm just working for the Macon County News as a contributing writer.
Brittany, is this your last name, your own?
Yes.
When's your last name, Brittany?
Cast.
When you done, you still in being?
Has been.
We need a motion for closed session. Property acquisition.
Make motion, Brittany.
All in favor?
Okay. Thank you.
When was, when were the...